Okay, we'll get started. I'll call a meeting to order if we could all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Today is Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. First discussion item on the agenda tonight is for Mary Ellen Real Estate, which is the Riverhead Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram proposed on Route 58.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. Here representing the applicant, I believe we have Kim Judd, attorney for the applicant, and Jane Millman, representative from Riverhead Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. So, the planning department has received and reviewed a final site plan application. The site plan application proposes to demolish an existing office building used for truck sales, as well as other accessory structures on the property, and to construct a new, approximately 31,000 square foot, two-story car dealership building, along with related site improvements for the sale and service of new and used motor vehicles. Subject property is located at 1716 Old Country Road, more particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map number 600-101-1-10.21. Just to give a brief history on this application, the planning board by Resolution number 2019-50 dated June 20th, 2019, initiated a coordinated SECA review and classified the action as a Type 1 action pursuant to SECA. By Resolution 19-69 dated August 1st, 2019, the planning board assumed lead agency status and issued a negative declaration pursuant to SECA. And on September 5th, 2019, by Resolution number 19-83, the planning board granted preliminary site plan approval with conditions for the proposed site plan application. To start, that preliminary approval resolution pursuant to town code was valid for one year, with the possibility of a six-month extension being granted at the discretion of the board by written request of the applicant. The applicant did submit a letter on November 18th, 2020 requesting that extension, and staff has prepared a six-month extension resolution for the board to consider. In terms of compliance with the conditions of the preliminary approval that were granted by Resolution number 20-83, I'm sorry, 19-83, most of them were addressed. There were a few minor issues that need to be corrected on the final site plan. Specifically, the number of indoor oil storage tanks in the capacities was listed on the site plan, but also must be included on the floor plan. The landscaping plan submitted for the final application labeled the trees, specifically the green spire Little Leaf Linden, showed them as three-inch caliper. They were supposed to be a minimum 3.5-inch caliper per the preliminary conditions. And the site plan must be revised to show the identifying arrows for the door located on the western side of the building in the vicinity of the Dodge sales area. This was shown on the floor plan, but the arrows are not identified on the site plan. Again, these are very minor corrections that could be included in a revision for the signature on the Mylar. One additional condition imposed by the preliminary approval dated September 5th, 2019 was that a condition for future cross-access, as determined by the planning board, may be a condition of final site plan approval. Now, on page three of the staff report, I did include an aerial image of the subject parcel, including the neighboring parcels. The viability to construct a cross-access along the western side, which the western property boundary is shared with the Brixmore site. There is a large sound wall on the side of that property and other related structures that really render a cross-access to this site unrealistic. On the eastern property boundary of the site, the northern portion of it is shared with an office complex. Constructing cross-access would require elimination of parking on that office complex, which I don't believe the property owner would necessarily agree to. There is, however, the only real feasible realistic location is highlighted in Figure 1 on page 3. That access is located, there's a shopping center, I believe it's called Warner's, Warner's Plaza. There would be one area where we, the planning board, if it so desires, could require a future cross-access. However, I'm not really sure, you know, the purpose of a future cross-access or a current cross-access would theoretically to be to reduce conflicting movements, reduce people having to go out onto 58. I'm not sure if this would really accomplish anything. It wouldn't get anybody to a signalized intersection. But if the board agrees, we could have them revise the site plan to include a future cross-access agreement in this area the board desires.
Greg, the sound wall on the west side, that doesn't go all the way to 58, does it? It's only by the Mobile Home Park, right?
It does, it extends a little bit past the Mobile Home Park, but there are retaining walls and other structures on that.
Oh, it's an elevation difference?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, really, really, it's a question that the most appropriate access point, if desired, would be that eastern portion, shown on Figure 1. Again, I'm not sure if the board really would require it. It can always be shown as a future cross-access. I mean, I don't think we'd necessarily be...
Doesn't seem to make much sense.
What, to require as a future cross-access?
Yeah, it doesn't seem to make much sense. To either, to either properties.
All right. I mean, like I said, there's no harm in showing it as a future cross-access. I don't think we'd have them require it now, but the rest of the board, are they in agreement, cross-access? Do we want it, or is it...
Well, I mean, it doesn't, I agree with Joe, it doesn't make much sense now with what's proposed and what the use is next door, but, like you say, it doesn't hurt to have it shown on the site plan. Uses change.
Hey Greg, could I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. Where the proposed cross-access is shown along Warner's, it doesn't bring you to a signal, so you wouldn't be able to make, if you were pulling out, you wouldn't be able to make a left turn out anyway. I think the most, if the board were to impose it, the most reasonable place would be for the Commerce Drive, because that leads you out to a light. Now, I heard that you said that the future property owner, or the property owner in the future, may not agree to eliminate the five parking spaces, but who's to say Warner's is going to be in the same boat that they're going to agree to the future? I just think that if the goal is to get the traffic to a signalized area, the Commerce Drive makes the most sense. Now, the property owner does like the western property line, but unfortunately, if you walk along from Route 58 to the back of the property, there's a three-to-four-foot difference in grade. The Brixmore property is much higher in elevation than our property. So, I would just say, if you're going to impose a future cross-access to Warner's lot, makes no sense, because it doesn't bring you to a signal. I think more makes sense to do it to the back of the west, I'm sorry, the east end of the property, so it gets you to the Commerce Drive signal, because it gets you to a light there.
I mean, again, if we're requiring a future cross-access, we're not necessarily asking them to build it at this time. It's just, like the chairman said, down the road, these sites get redeveloped, you know, reconfigured, it would just be a future cross-access. So, I mean, it really would be just, you know, the current property owner, Mary Ellen Real Estate, agreeing to a future cross-access. We wouldn't be asking you to build it at this point.
No, I understand that. I just would ask you not to limit it to the Warner property.
That's fine.
So, would we like, would we want to see a future cross-access along that whole eastern parcel? I mean, is that...
It's good policy and it's good planning.
What is that water district easement to the north more?
Yeah, as you recall, there was a lot-line modification that was approved at this point, probably close to two years ago, where that, the Glenwood property, I'm sorry, the Foxwood, did, there was kind of, there was an intent for like a future right-of-way. It had connected all the way down to 58. Mary Ellen Real Estate did a lot-line modification where they took that portion of the property. I believe there is a water main easement, because that's how their water is fed through Foxwood.
Is it there, though? I don't recall it being there in that direction.
Yes, it's there. That's the main, I think that's one of the main lines that feeds into Foxwood.
No, I know. But it came off of 58 and headed north to that property, to Foxwoods. This is going, this easement showing east and west.
What's the question? I'm sorry. If you could repeat it, I couldn't quite hear.
The water district easement there. I just don't recall it going east and west like that. It was north and south off of Route 58. And it only draws my attention, because that's probably where we would want to have the cross-access to the signalized intersection.
The water access is on the westbound side. The easement that you're looking for, it would be on the eastbound side.
Correct. So, the water line is shown along the western property boundary. I believe we'd be looking for the future cross-access agreement along the eastern property boundary, so it wouldn't conflict with any of those water easements.
Okay, so, the water easement in Maine is on the west side of the property.
Correct.
So, why is there an easement shown on the east side of this property? That's my question.
Chairman Carey, what page of the site plan are you on?
I'm on the first page here.
Site plan.
Which page?
Site plan drainage.
The drainage and sewer plan?
Actually, just on this first page of the site plan here.
What's the, there's several, on the top right corner, what's the title of the site?
Drainage and Sewer, 104.
Sorry, I didn't...
All right, so he's referring to the, there's a 15-foot Riverhead Water District easement, which is actually on the neighboring property. I don't, I can't comment, I don't know why that water main exists. I can't really speak to that from the, probably have to deal with when that site was built out and developed, but I can't speak to that.
Chairman Carey, I was told by my architect, Jim DeLuca, that he had spoken to Karen about it. There's about a four-foot elevation difference between the two parcels, between the Brixmore and ours, so that because of the elevation difference, it didn't make sense on the west side.
Yeah, no, but we're not, we're not talking about the west side right now. We're talking about on the east side. Again, it's off parcel, it's on that, it's on the Commerce Drive commercial property, but there is a, so, to your knowledge, are there any water mains that run east to west along that property? There would be nothing that...
Not that I'm aware of.
No, because that was the location of the, there were some mini golf courses and a batting cage back there.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're...
Oh, I see what you're looking at. Jane, you know what he's looking at? Look at the plan over here. He's, he's looking on the first page. Hold on a second. It's all the way at the top. I don't know if you can see it here. There's a 15-foot water, Riverhead Water District easement, but it goes up to the property line.
Okay, so the easement is on the Commerce Drive?
Yes. It's not on, it's not on the, on your parcel.
But again, just to confirm, there are no, to your knowledge, there's no water mains that run east to west along that property line in the vicinity of that?
Okay, so, I bring that up because you had indicated that the preferable location would be to a signalized intersection. Okay, so, right about where that easement is, is where it may in fact be, because that's probably lined up with the parking lots. So, what are we doing? We haven't a resolution just for a preliminary extension tonight?
Correct. This is just for the extension, and I wanted to hammer out some of these details.
Okay, so, it's not important to capture this tonight, but I would recommend that you look into that easement, maybe check with the water district, because that might, if they have no intention, as everything's being built out, of using that, that might be the perfect location to capture a cross-access agreement. Okay?
Okay. That's, that's fine.
I have some questions that I'd like to bring up, but I'll let you finish.
So, I'll just, I'll finish up quickly. We did get some comments from the town engineer. Again, the project, as it disturbs more than one acre, will require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and they will require a Chapter 229 excavation permit from the site due to the exportation of soils. So, I will look into the water district easement. I will report back to the planning board at our next meeting. I did make some recommendations of if the board is to grant final site plan approval. If you want, if you'd like me to read through all of them, I can, or if you want to just read through the report. And I will obviously update a condition regarding cross-access along that eastern portion of the property.
Greg, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that on the north end of the property, that there's going to be an irrigation well?
Correct.
Is that going to be for all of the landscaping that they install? Because there's a, you know, on both sides, the east and the west sides, there's a tremendous amount of plantings. I'm wondering if they're going to have irrigation there.
I believe, Kim, the irrigation well on the north side of the property, that is proposed to maintain the onsite landscaping, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, then going to the south end of the site, and on the landscaping plan, it shows that there's going to be irrigation on the front portions. And it's right where the water main comes in to service the property. So, I'm wondering whether they're going to tie in to the irrigation there, to the water main extension? Are they going to run all the lines all the way around the whole piece of property?
It does say irrigation heads, and right next to it, it says water meters.
Yep.
And the water line is right there.
Right.
So, his question is that front portion of the property, is the intent to water that from the irrigation well? Or were you planning to tap off water, water the front portion with public water? Is that correct?
Jane? Jane?
I'm not sure.
Okay. I thought it was from the irrigation heads that were going to be in the front.
Well, it's a long, it's a long run, because you're going to, you're going to all the way down both sides, and then you have to come through. I just thought the way it was, the way, it looked like the way it was set up, that you were going to, you were going to just tap off just for that portion in the front, for the grass, that you would be using...
Okay, so your question is whether or not we are going to irrigate it right from the water line?
Yes.
Okay. We can find out from... Well, we can get you the answer to that.
Okay. Yeah, bring that up now.
Okay.
All right. Did any of the board members have any other questions?
Just one last question.
Yes, sir.
What's the reason for the delay?
I'm sorry, what's the reason for the...
Delay. Why are you requesting another delay?
I'm sorry, why are we requesting...
Why are you requesting the extension?
Why are you asking for another extension? Why aren't we going to pre, uh, final approval? I mean, the site's kind of been in flux for a little while now.
Oh, well, I think the, the, the extension, I was advised by staff that the preliminary had expired, even though we had already put in our final application, so I was just trying to dot my i's and cross my t's.
Oh, got it. Okay, understood. Thank you.
Could I make just a couple brief comments? Greg, I know that you're, this was Karen's application, and you're coming into this late in the game. The SWIP, from what I understand, the SWIP was entirely completed.
Again, these were just comments from our town engineer, Mr. Dilliam. So, if it's been addressed, as long as we get confirmation from his office, I was just relaying my most recent round of comments from him. They have been redundant.
As far as number 13, where it says about the conveyance from the sewer district, that was completed. I had sent the resolution, again, when Karen was the planner, and we did submit the letters from the sewer district and the water district for the connection.
Right, again, I mean, I'll, it's tough trying to pick up where another planner left off. So, I'm just putting these into, you know, they may be super...
And I can, I can stand to go back from this again.
I'd rather just, I'd rather catch it and be, you know, have that extra level of check. If you, if the conditions are satisfied, it's a moot point. It's already addressed.
Okay.
I'd rather be safe and include them in there and cover our bases, rather than miss something.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. So, I will prepare a final site plan approval for the next meeting, pending the applicant addressing some of the questions that were raised tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Chapter 219 for Goodell Residence.
Okay, Brian. Greg, I'm sorry, I just thought of something. Did we get comments from Vinnie on this application?
The town engineer Drew was reviewing this one.
Okay, not, not our engineer. Okay.
The planning department has received and reviewed a Chapter 219 Coastal Erosion Hazard Line Permit application, seeking approval to perform improvements relating to the reinforcement of the bluff at 76 Sound Avenue in Bating Hollow. Proposed improvements include the construction of an approximately 142-foot stone revetment at the toe of the slope, consisting of two layers of 1.25-ton heavy armored stone, the installation of vegetation at the top of and down the face of the slope, as well as reinforcement of the slope with biologs and erosion control mats. Drainage improvements are also proposed upland on the property in order to manage stormwater runoff over the face of the bluff. The proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to SECA. Coordinated review is optional and not recommended. Staff recommends the planning board assume lead agency status and issue a negative declaration as the application proposes to repair, reinforce, and prevent future damage to the bluff, and there are no foreseeable negative environmental impacts from the, from the proposed improvements. The subject parcel, particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map 600-12-2.1, I'm sorry, 600-12-2-1, is a .829 acre parcel located at 76 Sound Avenue in Bating Hollow, within the Residence A80 zoning use district. The site is located approximately 4,000 feet north of Sound Avenue, along the Long Island Sound, accessed via a private driveway off of Sound Avenue. The majority of proposed improvements are located on this lot, with some bluff reinforcement and drainage improvements crossing over the lot line to the adjoining lot to the east, particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map 600-12-2-2.1, which is also owned by the applicant and for which an owner's endorsement has been provided.
When those properties merge, go ahead and say they have the same tax map. Oh, no, one and 2.1, sorry. Sorry.
Figure 1 shows the subject parcel outlined in red with the adjoining lot outlined in blue. The site is presently improved with a two-story frame house and a one-and-a-half-story frame garage, along with a driveway that runs along the eastern edge of the property. The property slopes downward from its southern edge, flattening off as it approaches the edge of the bluff. During a site visit on November 19th, 2020, staff noted that the area below the northern edge of the driveway appears to have been eroded due to stormwater runoff from the existing driveway, as shown in Figures 3, 4, and 5 of my report. An approximately 142-foot stone revetment is proposed at the bottom of the bluff. Above this revetment, beech grass plantings and erosion control fabric are proposed where necessary to control erosion in areas where the bluff lacks existing vegetation, as shown in Figure 6. Near the 50, 60, and 70-foot contours, three biologs are proposed in combination with beech grass plantings, erosion control fabric, and sand fill. Near the top of the bluff, an eight-foot diameter, 10-foot-deep leaching basin with associated paving and curbing is proposed in order to control stormwater runoff from the existing driveway.
Brian, what's a biolog?
To my understanding, it's a log of natural fiber, I believe typically constructed out of coconut fiber, that's placed horizontally across the face of the bluff in order to control erosion.
Okay, thanks.
Additional drainage structures are proposed upland on the driveway. However, they are not within an area regulated by town code, Chapter 219. Additional improvements have been proposed on-site outside of Chapter 219 regulated areas, including the demolition of the existing two-story house and the construction of a new two-story house. The proposed improvements within areas regulated by Town Code Chapter 219 are permitted under Town Code 219-14B1, which allows for minor alterations of a bluff done in accordance with conditions stated in a coastal erosion management permit issued for new construction, modification, or restoration of an exist, of an erosion protection structure. The town's consulting engineer provided comments in a memo dated October 2020, and took no objection to the proposed improvements. He noted that upon satisfactorily, satisfactorily addressing the items and issues identified by the planning department, if any, engineering approval is recommended. The New York State DEC issued a Title Wetlands Permit pursuant to Article 25, which approves work done in conformance with New York State DEC-approved stamped plans. The DEC has determined that the portion of the property located landward of the 70-foot elevation contours beyond Title Wetlands Act Article 25 jurisdiction. I do have the applicant on Zoom here, if there's any questions from the board.
Yeah, I have a question, Brian. Very comprehensive, good job, by the way.
Thank you.
Will this project in any way inhibit the public's use of the beach right, beach property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
From my understanding, the stone revetment is just very close to the toe of the slope and does not appear to impede on any beach area that the public would be using.
Thank you.
Are there any limitations on times of the year that they could construct it? They would probably know. Do you guys know Edgar?
What was the question?
I'm just wondering if the permit restricts any times of the year that you could do construction?
No, it's all private property. You know, we're only going to be inside the jurisdiction wetlands just for that one drainage structure. So, with the approval, we could get it done, you know, right now, even well before even the springtime.
Got it. Thank you.
Does the board have any further questions?
No.
Who is the town's consulting engineer?
Quite an undertaking.
Who is the town's consulting engineer?
Mr. Vincent Guardiola.
Okay, so we don't have any issues, and we'll bring it up on the resolutions in a few minutes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is minus subdivision of Henry Silverman.
Charles Cuddy, can you hear me through the mask? Charles Cuddy and I spoke on the phone today, and Mr. Cuddy has reviewed the resolution as before you, and he's gone over it with Mr. Silverman, who I also understand is in agreement with the resolution. The issue that's presented is in regard to the building envelopes and structures that are shown on the signed Health Department map. Unfortunately, as maps pass through our process and maps pass through the Health Department process, different agencies have different issues that they wish addressed during mapping. And the Health Department is very concerned about building locations vis-à-vis septic systems. So they want to keep these building envelopes on the lot. Your board was concerned about the building envelopes giving a vested property right if the situation changed with the wetland water levels or other features. So, your board required two things to address that. One was the removal of the envelopes on the filed map, and the other was a covenant that would state that they would have to come back to your board to address the sighting of any buildings at a future time when a building permit was sought, and also an acknowledgement in the covenant that the location of the building envelopes did not control the, the future location. So it's my advice to you that that covenant is strong enough to protect the interest that you had in making sure that the future site conditions meet the current building situation at that time, and that the building envelopes could remain on, because Mr. Silverman is really caught in a bind at this point. Either has to appeal the Health Department decision or appeal your decision, when really the two agencies aren't at odds over the concept, it's a, you know, in the, in the, in the old days, a subdivision map just had the perimeter of the property line and a line down the center, and that was the division. As these maps become more and more sophisticated, the, it's, this is what's going to happen. And I, I don't really have an easy solution for that other than we do it on a case-by-case basis.
More room for questions. That's what it does, so, the, the applicant's attorney agreed, the applicant agreed to, to the?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Cuddy on the phone today, and he relayed that he had spoken with Mr. Silverman, and that Mr. Silverman understood, and, and, and they, they didn't, they, they were notified that they could be present tonight to state anything that they wished, but he said that I could relay that position.
Great, okay, any questions from the board?
Nope.
It's fairly straightforward, thank you. Okay, no public hearings tonight, public comments on resolutions, any comments on the three resolutions? Okay, all right, so we'll take up the resolutions?
Move Resolution Number Seventy-Nine for Mary Ellen Real Estate, so moved?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution Seventy-Nine, granting a one-year extension of the preliminary site plan approval for Mary Ellen Real Estate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved.
I move Resolution Twenty-Twenty Eighty for Goodell, Chapter Ninety, Two-Nineteen, Hazard Line Permit, so moved?
Second motion?
The motion made and seconded to approve Resolution Eighty for Chapter Two-Nineteen for Goodell Residence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved.
I move Resolution Number Eighty-One, which is the minus subdivision of Henry Silverman, and amends the previous resolution.
Second motion?
Motion made and seconded to approve Resolution Eighty-One for a minus subdivision of Henry Silverman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, resolution is approved. Okay, public comment on any matter, I understand we had a question about the seven-eleven on West Main Street, and I believe the applicant is with us. Greg, do you want to give us an explanation?
Yeah, so I was contacted by Mr. Krasnow, representative for, I believe it's Riverhead Real Estate Partners, the seven-eleven that's under construction on West Main Street. Mr. Krasnow had requested a change in the approved site plan. Now, I did provide, I just did a quick photocopy of the site layout for the site plan. And as you see on that site plan in green, I highlighted what is on the site plan indicated as a six-foot-tall PVC fence. On, highlighted in orange is a three-foot picket fence. Now, one of the conditions in a final approval, and which is noted on the signed Mylar, is that all PVC fencing components will be brown. I believe, I, I'm not sure, again, this was one of Karen's projects, so I'm not sure of the impetus for the request for that color. But I'll let Mr. Krasnow, you know, let you, I'll let him speak about his issues that he's having and what he's looking to request.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. The last time I was at a public hearing was when you approved this project and pre-COVID, and the world kind of changing. Due to COVID, we've had some problems sourcing certain products for this project. We were having a problem with the split brick to do the facade, that's why we haven't been able to start the brick yet, which hopefully we're going to start on Monday. Just been difficulty sourcing products, product availability, and stuff as a result of COVID. One of the changes that was part of this plan, and I think it came from Karen, if it came from one of the board members, I wasn't aware, and I'll be happy to address it, was they had changed the fence color around the perimeter of the property and in the front of the property from a white vinyl PVC to a dark brown. We're having a problem sourcing this product, we're told it could take eight to twelve weeks. It's not a stock product, it's not normally a regular manufactured product. We're hoping to be open sooner than that, so we were wondering if we could go back to the original white color, which I think would still look nice with all the natural and full-scale brick that we're putting up, and I wanted to know if anybody on the board had an objection to that, or they would be okay with letting us source the white, the white PVC for both the six-foot and the picket fence, and we could get it done right away.
I don't recall why you said brown, do you?
I think those white PVC fences are obnoxious.
Yeah, if I could.
You remember?
I do, I'm the one that recommended it during the deliberations on the application, Jeff Murphy for the record. The reason for it is white is a very bright reflective material. This is going to be six-foot tall over around almost the three-quarters of the entire perimeter of the site. If you want to draw attention to something, you put a highlight on it. This is going to be a very large white object that you're going to see from a very far distance. Dark colors absorb light, they, they visually block something from view, and they absorb light, and therefore they become invisible, just like we require black chain-link fences around the solar farms, because you don't want the silver chain-link fence reflecting that you can see from miles away. You want to hide what's behind it, you want to minimize it, you want it to look more natural. White is going to look very much like a manicured look, and you can be much more highly visible. That's the reason why staff recommended the brown color instead of white.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly, I would rather see black chain-link instead of white PVC.
So, just the timing of it, you said eight to twelve weeks is the lead time on that brown fence, but you haven't started the facade brickwork yet, but yet you think you're going to be open in, in, in that time?
Well, pretty much the interior is, is mostly done, the brickwork is going to take a few weeks. Again, we had a problem sourcing the block on the bottom of the brickwork, we even thought possibly going back to you and seeing if we could do all brick, and we, we were able to figure out a way to get it. So, from that perspective, we're planning on turning over the store in a couple of weeks, they're going to stock it, and then they're hoping to open mid to late January. So I was wondering if, I didn't realize what Jeff just shared about how it would look, it seems like most of the neighborhood there has white vinyl fence, and we thought maybe we could do a wider, possibly compromise on a beige, which is also more of a stock item and more easily accessible. So that's why I was requesting to see what your thoughts were and what made the most sense and what make you guys happiest though.
I just got a question out of ignorance. Is it possible that the white fence could be painted?
No, no, you wouldn't, the PVC material would not be appropriate for painting. I mean, if, if I might recommend, we do have, we have two, you know, kind of conflicting interests. We have an applicant who'd like to get his building open versus the, you know, town's interest in reducing the visual obtrusiveness. I mean, the installation of a fence, in my opinion, is something that could be addressed. I mean, I, I don't think that component should necessarily hold them up. I may recommend, if the board agrees, they want to keep that brown fence, we could issue a temporary CVO conditioned upon installing the fence per the site plan. I think that way it wouldn't hold up the applicant from moving forward with his project, but at the same time still protects the interest in what we were trying to preserve in the downtown area.
I agree a hundred percent, that was going to be my comment, let it move along and, and deal with it.
Jeff, did you guys consider like black chain-link or no?
No, because you still have to have like a black insert in it as well.
Okay, would you be happy waiting if you got a temporary CVO and waited for the brown?
So you could open?
Yeah, that, that definitely helps, I mean, the brown is also about twenty-five thousand dollars more, but I was willing to do it, I just didn't know it was going to be a problem to source it.
You gotta fill in some stocks.
But if that's not going to, you know, you know, we, there's probably one or two plants that might be an issue planting this time of the year, which I was going to see if we could, you know, wait till it gets to the spring, as I was told you can't dig them up now. But if you're willing to allow us to do that, and brown is what you want, again, I told you from day one, I would do whatever I could to give you the best you, of my ability to give you what you want, and, you know, like I said, we're putting in the brick, the clock tower, everything else, so if that's what you feel, and you feel that white is not going to fit into the area, although I think there's, most people do have white PVC fence on the block, we'll move forward with the brown.
Good. Awesome.
All right, so.
Thank you.
We'll keep it that way and allow you a little time.
Okay, thank you very much for your help, I appreciate it, thanks for your time and have a great holiday.
You too.
All right, any other comments from the public on any matter in front of the planning board, any public comments? Yeah, who's Robin? Robin, just a listener?
She can, she can unmute herself if she wanted to.
Can I make a motion that we move the November nineteenth, twenty-twenty minutes, so moved?
Motion made and seconded to approve the November nineteenth minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, minutes are approved, any other business with the board?
No.
Okay, next meeting is Thursday, December seventeenth at three PM, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, thank you.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.